That led from nothing to something. All right. Thank you, Keith, for the music as everybody walked in. So we're going to get the meeting started. Aloha, everybody. And welcome and mahalo for joining us this evening for our monthly town meeting. I'm Mary Beth Leitrack, President of the Waimea Community Association. Other WCA officers include our Vice President Nancy Carr Smith, because I'm able to make it today. Our Treasurer Victor Tom, and Victor is sitting over at the sign-in table. Our Secretary McKellah Bruno, who's over here at our tech table. And our Directors Riley Smith, David Greenwell, also will not able to join us either of them this evening. Patty Cook, sitting by the front door. Chris Wong in the back, Ryan Yoshima. Yushijima here, and Lonnie Olsen Chong, and so Lonnie's not able to join us this evening either. We are excited to have tonight's speakers with us. They will be covering essential aspects of life in Hawaii County with updates from the Hawaii County Police Department, Hawaii County Council updates, and county real property taxes. May 11 through 17 is National Police Week. So we wanted to take the time to mahalo our police department. I want to give a huge mahalo to Loki Martinez and Tony Reed for tonight's special refreshments in honor of National Police Week. Please make sure you eat some cake. It is over there. Please take cake home with you. There's a lot of cake and it looks absolutely delicious. Yeah. So we are live streaming our meeting on the WCA Facebook page as well as on our YouTube channel, which can be found on our website homepage, waimeatown.org. This recording will be made available for later viewing. We are happy to have you all here who could join us in person this evening. And we are equally happy to have everybody who is online and can watch us virtually, either tonight or later on this month. Technology is amazing what we're able to do. If you haven't already done so, we encourage you to become a member of the Waimea Community Association. You can do this at the sign-in desk over there. You can join via our website or by mailing a check to the P.O. box on the back of the agenda. We are all volunteers, so your membership helps pay for the hard cost of operating. We appreciate your support and appreciate that Waimea is a community that respects each other, even when we might not always agree. We are grateful to be here at the WMCEC Observatory this month. We appreciate their willingness to let us use this space this month and next month. And I'd like to welcome CAC Director Richmond Suda to say a few words, including a couple housekeeping items.
Thanks, Mary Beth. So we just warmly welcome everyone here to the WMCEC Observatory headquarters for tonight's meeting. We are always honored to have the community in here at CAC. And so we just like to contribute by opening our space. Just real quickly, I want to introduce two members of our team that often support these meetings. Andrew Odell, if you'd raise your hand, is our Chief Administrative Legal Officer at CAC. And Keith Wuchon, in addition to be a DJ on B93, is also Administrative Assistant at CAC. And so all three of us welcome you here. If you need to use the restroom, just go out the double doors and make a U-turn. And behind the wall here down the hall is the men's and women's room. And if for some reason we have some sort of emergency or power outage, we meet outside these double doors. So other than that, I hope you have a great meeting tonight. Thank you.
Right. If you are presenting this evening, please keep your eye on Ryan. Ryan is the timer this evening. He will hold up signs. Please listen to Ryan. Mahalo, Ryan. This is Ryan's first time timing, so don't take advantage of him. All right. We also again want to thank the team at CAC for helping with tonight's setup and our live streaming. As Rich mentioned, Andrew and Keith are regulars. Andrew, possibly by virtue of the fact that we are married, but he could always say no if he chose. All right. As we continue our tradition of honoring and respecting the various faith groups that make up our wonderful community, tonight we are very excited to welcome the Hawaii Police Department's Chaplain, Renee Godoy. Renee, thank you for offering tonight's bullet.
How wonderful to be here. Where's Ryan? I promise, Ryan, I will not go over three minutes. I promise you that. I love how organized you are. I love the meeting. I love your Tahoe meetings. I've been here a couple of times. And it's an honor and a privilege for me to be here. Let me just introduce myself. I wear three hats, three polos, and two uniforms. So I often don't know which one to wear. And so I'm proud and humbled to serve each chaplain with the Police Department. Eighteen years as a fire chaplain about eight. And as a founder and president of nonprofit first responders, starting in 2021, as devoted to the health and wellness of first responders and their families. That's an introduction and not a commercial, but that's who I am. And I am proud to represent them, but equally proud to ask God's blessings on the Waimea Community Association's meeting tonight. Because I feel like an old friend to this organization because of our shared passion and appreciation for the first responders in our communities that keep our island community safe. Everything about this association impresses me. They are well organized. In the pre-stages of their monthly meetings, I get an agenda, I get everything prior to the meeting. They keep the meetings moving. Ryan's going to keep that meeting moving. And they move to take action that will result in positive and change after the meeting. They tackle important issues, invite subject matter experts, and basically they do their homework. I love item F in their mission statement. It begins, "To lessen the burden on the County of Hawaii and other public agencies." Because that's what they do. They lessen the burden by rolling up their sleeves and getting under the road. So with that, let's pray. Don't mind if I pray with my eyes open and read my prayer. Lord, we thank you for the Waimea Community Association, their officers, their directors, and their members, and their love and devotion for their community that is spelled out in all of their efforts and hard work to make Waimea a wonderful and safe place to live and work. We thank you that Waimea can live up to its nickname, God's Country, because they are hard at work doing those things that are in line with your will to ensure that it continues to be blessed by you. We ask tonight that every person that takes the mic to speak does so with respect for the listeners, that they boldly speak the truth, but do so with love and aloha. We pray that action that will solve community issues and lead to positive change will come out of the exchange of ideas presented here tonight. We pray that you give the leadership of this association the wisdom they need to make sound decisions that result in a healthy community. We pray that many valuable partnerships will spring up as others seek to lessen the burden on the association as they serve to lessen the burden on our county. We ask that you give them the strength and energy they need to bear the responsibilities they have willingly took upon themselves. Bless them in all the undertake, as the undertake to serve you by serving others. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you again for the honor and the invitation.
Mahalo so much for joining us this evening. All right. So from here, we're going to move to our non, sorry, our community announcements. The community announcements, we have another very, very, very busy month in Waimea. And so McKellah, you could share for us, please. So this was big news. If you are not aware, the Department of Water Supply has put out a conservation notice for the Waimea community. Basically, it is all of Waimea Town effective April 29. Please cut your water consumption by 10% for their request. If you need information or details, DWS will be posting that on their website. And I also saw they had an update on their social media page. So that's going to be your So that's going to be your best source for that information. Next slide, please. All right. Okay. The Parker Ranch Roundup Club will host a Family Fun Day this Saturday, May 3rd. We check in starting at 8:00 AM. They have both horse and non-horse events. Next slide, please. The Saturday, May 3rd, is the Waimea Arts Council and Thelma Parker Library's Monthly Community Arts Class. This month, they are presenting Zines, an eight-page mini magazine. So learning how to make your own eight-page mini magazine. Next slide, please. Kehelu Theater is offering two very exciting programs this month. This Sunday is POPS. And on Saturday, May 17th, the other individual, Robert Casemaro, needs no introduction, but you can feel free to go and watch that one. It should be a really great show. Next slide, please. County Councilman James Eustace is hosting three community conversations next week, a sixth, seventh, and eighth. Special guests include Rep. Tarnus and Senator Richards for all meetings, plus Rep. Lowen in Waikoloa and Councilwoman Kimball here in Waimea. If you have any questions, I think you all know how to find Councilmember Eustace even in the front row. Next slide, please. The next Narcan giveaway is this Friday at Waimea KTA from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, or while supplies last. A reminder, you can always pick Narcan up at Tutu's House during normal business hours. Next slide. Right. Community members are hosting a facilitated discussion on two bills, 198 and 199, Tuesday, May 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM at the Waimea Community Center. Next slide. The annual Honaka Western Week will occur May 17 through 26. There are so many fun activities all week, including a block party, a parade, Portuguese bean soup slash smoky contest, Haniolo Storytime, and more. More info can be found at QR codes here or the Honaka Western Week website. Slide. All right. Check out the Prince Dance Company's The Very Hungry Enjue on May 25th, 24th, and 25th at Kehelu Theater. It is a take on the classic children's story. Next slide, please. Tuesday, May 27th, is the monthly Annunciation Community Food Pantry Distribution. Distribution starts at 8:00 AM and runs until they are called. Next slide. Friends of the First Responders are hosting their fourth annual Golf Scramble Fanfic, and that is May 31st. For more information or to register, please scan the QR code. All right, next slide. The Waimea Resilience Hub is hiring a part-time coordinator. Diane Chadwick is here this evening. And I'm certainly be happy to answer any questions that you have about that position, or you can email her at the address in the ad. Okay, next slide, please. The Hawaii Community Foundation's Richard Smart Fund is accepting applications through May 30th. The fund provides grants to nonprofit organizations supporting healthcare, education, and charitable purposes in the Waimea zip code. Follow the QR code for more information. And our last announcement is a save the date for the 2025 Hawaii County Four-Heach Livestock Show and Auction. That'll be held June 13th and 14th. All right. So next up is another very familiar face here in Waimea. This most nonprofit is Dare. Dare is a police-sponsored drug prevention and good choices education program for elementary and middle school students. This is the fortieth year of this program. We all did kind of a double take when Captain Alara came in, not in uniform. He is the President of Dare Hawaii's Executive Board, and he will speak today about the program. As always, we will pass the basket during the presentation for those inspired to make a donation. So Captain, come on up. We're getting set up. We had some technical difficulties earlier with the captain's flash drive, but we're all good now. Perfect.
Can I pass a word of thank you?
Sure.
Good evening. Mahalo. My name is John White, Home and Global Health Center. I was here last month with Dr. Campbell. We presented our community health needs assessment. We ask you to participate in 774 surgeries returning. Thank you.
All right. We'll get this worked out. And so I'm going to turn it over here to the captain.
Thank you very much. So you know what I do in my day job. But for the past number of years, I've had the honor and privilege of serving as the president of a statewide nonprofit organization on my own time volunteering. And the name of the organization is Dare Hawaii. And I wanted to talk a little bit about Dare Hawaii. But before I talk about Dare Hawaii, and we can go to the next slide if possible. Well, I wanted to talk about Dare America. So Dare America came about in 1983. I know none of you were around at that time. But in 1983, due to an unparalleled drug abuse amongst the youth in California in the 1970s and 1980s, the Los Angeles Police Department Police Chief at the time, who was Darrell Gates, and the Los Angeles Unified School District created an innovative substance abuse prevention program called DARE, which is Drug Abuse Resistance Education. It's an acronym. And so this occurred in 1983. And the DARE program was designed in cooperation with the school district for uniformed police officers to go into classrooms to instruct students seventeen lessons. And it's normally one week or one lesson a week for seventeen weeks. And it was lecture-based. It wasn't show and tell, but it was lecture-based. And for those of you who have ever sat through a lecture, you know it was real entertaining as a fifth grader to sit through seventeen lectures, right? But that's what they came up with back in 1983. And since then, the DARE program has gone through several evolutions. Next slide. And it was no longer just about drugs. Today's DARE program is about making healthy choices. And what the DARE officers go into classes now, they use something called the DARE Decision Making Model, D-A-R-E, which stands not only for dare, but define, assess, respond, and evaluate. And this is a simple acronym using the same name in order to help kids remember the four steps in making good choices. And what the police officers do throughout the curriculum is use different scenarios, different skits, videos, and activities within the classrooms to engage the students. And you know what? The kids really like it. It sounds like a lot of tough stuff, but the kids really enjoy the program. And it is now ten lessons with a bunch of added lessons to include fentanyl, over-the-counter prescriptions, bullying, and online safety. Next slide, please. Dare America has also branched out into fifteen international DARE training centers located in Canada, Mexico, Costa Rica, Panama, Philippines, the United Kingdom, Bahrain, Thailand, and seven itself in Brazil, each capable of training and teaching in the many different languages. To date, more than 25,000 police officers and international police officers have been trained and certified to teach the DARE program. Next slide, please. So the new curriculum, or the curriculum itself is evidence-based. It uses evidence-based strategies. Like I said, it's gone, undergone two revisions. It addresses different learning modalities of the students. And they work individually, in pairs, in large groups. And they use videos, activities, and workbooks. There's going to be a new curriculum introduced this year in 2025, and that's going to occur in July. And the curriculum actually covers grades kindergarten, three to four, five, six, seven, eight. There's a high school component and even a parent component. And what it does again is it teaches kids to make good decisions. Next slide, please. Here on Ahoi, I'm sorry, we talked about the DARE Decision Making Model, but next slide. Here on the Big Island, the Hawaii Police Department, the DARE program is taught by school resource officers and community police officers who attend a two-week intense training. We take a police officer, send him to Oahu for two weeks, and they come back as brand-new DARE officers. And currently on the Big Island, we have eight certified DARE officers. And they teach in those schools listed there, Hilo Intermediate, Waikin Intermediate, Pohua Elementary, Honaka Elementary, Kona Waina Elementary, Koala Elementary, Koala Middle School, Kano Okaaina, Waimea Elementary, Waikoloa Elementary, and Kalanianna Odei Elementary Schools. Next slide, please. This is what the DARE officers go through in a classroom. It's kind of a small training center, but they're divided into groups and they're given intense instruction by DARE mentors. DARE mentors are those officers who have talked of their curriculum for a while and know the ins and outs of the curriculum. Next slide. After the intense two-week training, they celebrate their graduation. And then they come back. Next slide. And they are able to go into classrooms and experience the DARE class or teaching the DARE class in an unsterile situation. You know, when you're in training, everything's kind of easy, right? Or so you think. And then you go into class and it's another story. Next slide, please. These are images of some of the more than 25,000 officers that have graduated from training centers. Next slide, please. So now I'd like to talk about Dare Hawaii. Next slide. So Dare Hawaii was created in the early 1990s. And it was originally named the Hawaii Dare Officers Association, HDOA. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And the purpose of Dare Hawaii was to support our DARE officers who teach the DARE program. We offer them training, mentorship, funding, and we disseminate information that comes from Dare America in regards to curriculum updates. There are many active members statewide. Within the four counties, Hawaii, Honolulu, and the Big Island are the only three that teach the DARE program. The Maui Police Department has reached out and has begun teaching another drug resistance program, drug prevention program. So now, Dare Hawaii. Okay, we're 501(c)(3). What do we actually do? Well, we take dare out of the classroom. Next slide, please. And here are some examples of taking dare out of the classroom. You know, we have to reach into some of the archives. And if I come on the side, you guys can look at the pictures. So we have some photos. Take a look at the hairstyles and the clothing. I know none of you still wear this type of clothing, but this is from way back in the day of dare. And you know, it's kind of weird. We had to go through COVID like everybody else, and we had to adapt how we would teach the DARE curriculum. Luckily, Dare America has come online with an online component, and students are able to access the program on laptops and on tablets. This next photo shows an award ceremony during the COVID times. I know they're not wearing masks, but they drove to the residence to present awards to all of their DARE graduates. This is the Maui Police Department. Dare outside of the classroom also includes community activities and community events. And some of the activities we do in conjunction with the Police Department are KPID programs or community events. I believe this was at Relay for Life in Kona. Next slide, please. Some of the visibility of Dare Hawaii and the DARE program are DARE vehicles. And many different police departments have different DARE vehicles. This is a Circa 1980-something suburban from the Honolulu Police Department. Next slide, please. We have also participated in parades, many parades. This is a Waikiki trolley that was decorated with DARE officers and DARE students in one of the parades on Oahu. And then ten years ago, we celebrated thirty years of dare in the state of Hawaii. And they had a big celebration at Pearl Ridge Shopping Center on Oahu. And there was entertainment. This young woman is singing one of the songs there. And it was a terrific event. A lot of the community came out. You know, my mom, till this day, asks, "Oh, is dare still there?" And I kind of get mad because I kind of like the president guy, right? So I said, "Yes, Mom, dare is still there." The next photo shows two important individuals. The gentleman closest to you would be Danny Kaiai. He was the first DARE officer in the state of Hawaii. And the other gentleman there with the glasses, that is Frank Bagaroski, is the president and CEO of Dare America. And you know, I'm a visual learner, and I like looking at pictures. So I have a lot of pictures of dare past, present, well, not future, but past and present. This was an event in Kona. We had bike patrol there with the Police Department and our dare booth. Maui Police Department presenting more awards and certificates during the COVID years. Dare also goes out, and we had done fishing tournaments in both South Kohala and the Hamakua Community. And at these fishing tournaments, the goal is to provide wholesome family activities for children and the rest of their ohana. And I don't remember. I think we had eighty children and family members. Eighty children plus their family members at this event held down at the Maui Point Beach Park. And again, the goal is to further strengthen the bond between the family and to again remind the students there are many activities that they can do other than risky behaviors. These next series of photos are from the South Kohala Fishing Derby held this past, what was it, July? I think it was during the summertime. And we had many youths. This was down in Koai High. And they also enjoyed this program. One of the other activities that we had was a Dare Hawaii skateboard and BMX activity held at the Honaka Skate Park. And we had about thirty youths and friends participate. And again, we're just offering and suggesting other activities as an alternative to risky behaviors. This was a great partnership with the Honaka Business Association, Dare Hawaii, and the Police Department.
Oh, no, you can't take this.
And these are, these are just more photos. The biggest event that we have on the Big Island is Dare Day. And what it has evolved into is a celebration of all the students who graduate this ten-week program. One event is held in Hilo and one event is held in Kona because geographically, the Big Island is too big to only have one within a school day. And so these are some images of the different Dare Days that have occurred throughout the years. There are activities within the gymnasium, in the swimming pool, and we have carnival games outside for the students to participate in. And what we try to do is offer a variety of activities for the students, because not everybody swims, not everybody plays sports, and not everybody is, has the same skill level. We also had a Dare Day activity a couple of years ago in Waikoloa Village itself for the Waikoloa School. And it was well-attended. We had participation from our chaplain program. And lastly, what I wanted to talk about is we're very fortunate that our media does spotlight our DARE programs. This article was in regards to a Dare conference. This article was in regards to a dare conference that was held in Hawaii. We do have a training conference every two years. And of course, I got to put in a picture for myself. Thanks to KATV Four News, they uh ran a story on the dare program and Dare Day in Kona. So with that, I'd like to wrap it up and thank you very much. Keep spreading the word that the dare program is out there and is well um well and going. You know, our dare officers really enjoy the program. And I haven't met a dare officer yet who said that uh they couldn't wait to be done teaching dare. Uh, many officers, uh, this program is after so many years, you have to rotate out of the program and go do something else. And many officers say, wow, I'll go back in a heartbeat. I'll go back in a heartbeat and and that's because, in my opinion, there's instant satisfaction. You go to school, you teach this program, and you see the results from the kids firsthand. And Dare Hawaii is just very fortunate to be able to support all of our dare officers. So thank you very much.
There's no doubt that Captain Valera has been thinking out for dare. And I truly hope that your mom is watching and she knows that dare still exists. So thank you very much, Captain. So our first speaker tonight is no stranger to Waimea. We are excited to welcome Assistant Chief Sherry Bird, former Waimea captain, who is going to talk to us about the history of the department, some challenges and opportunities, and the proposed county council budget. Then we'll have a short um community policing update. Uh, because so many of our questions are interconnected to, um, so many of our topics are interconnected tonight. We will roll into um the county council and also come and do an introduction for that. And we'll take questions for the police and county council afterwards. Out of respect for the fact that uh Councilwoman Campbell is in DC and it is late there, so. Captain Bird, sorry, Assistant Chief Bird, I am so sorry, Assistant Chief Bird.
Good to see you, everyone. Uh, as mentioned, I used to be the captain out here for uh two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty, I want to say. And I have to say that's how Kohala really uh holds a special place uh in my, in my heart zone. Um, coincidentally, uh Captain Roy was talking about there, coincidentally or not. Um, our police department just pushed out a media release about the latest Dare Day. So if you take a look at that, you might see a picture of him uh in that media release. But uh, they really do a good job for the kids. Uh, so I was going to talk about Police Week a little bit. Um, a little bit of history on that. In nineteen sixty-two, if you don't know, President John F. Kennedy, he signed a proclamation uh which designates May fifteenth of every year as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the week that that date uh that May fifteenth falls in is Police Week. So during Police Week, we honor those law enforcement officers who paid the ultimate sacrifice. And on our island, we have seven officers who are memorialized for their brave sacrifices. Uh, the most recent in two thousand and eighteen, when Officer Bronson coming off, was killed in the line of duty. Uh, this year, Police Week falls May eleventh through the seventeenth, and we're going to have uh two ceremonies. Uh, one on Monday, May twelfth, at the Hilo Police Station. And then Friday, May sixteenth, at the Westway Civic Center. Uh, the ceremonies are open to everyone and I'd encourage you to attend. It really affords everyone an opportunity to reflect and just give honor uh, you know, to the life of service of those um officers who died serving under the Navy. And I'll also add that at the Hilo Police Station, if you don't know, we have a memorial wall with all of the officers' names, uh, names on the wall. Um, and it's a good, if you haven't been there to see it, uh, feel free to stop by and you can stop by any time there or not. And just it gives you a nice peaceful feeling, a moment of reflection. Um, talking about our department, so as far, as far as personnel are concerned, um, we have four hundred and ninety-three sworn police positions allocated to our department. Of those positions, we currently have sixty-three vacancies. And then we have a hundred and fifty-nine civilian positions, of which we have thirty-nine vacancies. And of those thirty-nine vacancies, fifteen of those are dispatches. As far as department budget, we have approximately eighty-six uh million uh within the police department budget. Of that, seventy-nine percent goes to our salary and wages, so that's a really huge chunk. About eighteen percent goes to our operating costs, you know, keeping the lights and electricity uh running. And that leaves just about three percent uh for equipment and other costs. Uh, so for this next fiscal year, we asked for, Chief asked for several new positions. Uh, trying to build our department up. Uh, we're growing, you know, the island is growing, population growing. Uh, positions, more officers, some clerk positions, information, uh, technology analysts, research analysts, some equipment, um, the laptops that the officers carry in, carry in their car so they can uh see the calls for service and things like that. Blue and white vehicles, some vacation software. We're still going through the budget, but uh I believe we received approval for a small amount of sworn and a a lot of clerk position. Uh, ultimately, we're hoping to decrease the number of sworn vacancies by adding a net gain of thirty officers. Um, last year, we were able to hire a total of forty-eight officers, which is great. Unfortunately, this op, this last year coincided uh with the twenty-five year mark of uh the biggest recruit class that our department has had thus far, that was thirty-three in the recruit class. Um, and that, but that twenty-five year mark meant was that they were able to retire. And so a lot of them did. Um, so where we normally average around twelve sworn retirements a year, last year we had twenty-four. Uh, which left us with a net gain of two. So um, so that leads into the discussion of recruitment efforts. So things that we've been doing since October of twenty twenty-three, we moved to a continuous recruitment. So previously, we used to do the uh, you know, give out the written test and uh twice a year, I want to say. Uh, but we moved it to uh once a month. So the written test once a month, then you pass the written test, two weeks later, you can come and take the agility. We do the agility uh once a month as well. Uh, we made a few changes as well, so if you uh don't pass the agility on the first try, you have one opportunity to come back uh on the next forum and and pass it. Um, so we have that. Uh, we have a recruitment incentive uh of a thousand dollars. It's not, you know, that much, but nonetheless, an incentive. Uh, we also have continuing uh education opportunities for officers uh partnering with UH Hilo. Uh, with this program, our sworn officers can attend completely online classes and furtheren some a bachelor's degree in administration of justice. And they can be reimbursed via our tuition reimbursement program. Um, we also try to re, like promote our, our department as best as we can. We got social media, we're really um embracing social media, using all the platforms that we can. So if you subscribe to Hilo, you'll probably see us, our, our department out there a lot more than in, in the past. Um, and trying to engage as much as possible with our community. And hopefully, in that process, attend job fairs and things like that. Hopefully, in that process, attract in interested individuals. Uh, we're also trying to capture the attention of those who don't quite, they're not of age yet to become a police officer, so those eighteen to twenty-year-olds, they might be going to college, but interested in uh becoming an officer, um, which we can't be until you're twenty-one. So uh, this fall, we're starting a fall internship program as we have in partnership with UH Hilo. Uh, with this program, students are required to work ten hours a week at the police department in various sections, but they can earn upper level uh administration of justice uh college credits. Um, highlights as far as department goes, uh, it's still in development, but we are working on a uh big um notification system where it'll work so like if you call nine one one, you want to report something. But sometimes, as it is now, you report something, you hang up with dispatch and then you wait. And you wait, and you wait some more and you don't know what's going on, right? One time, you, you know. So with this, it's a notification system, um, you call dispatch. You can receive a text message saying officer's been uh dispatched and it then is being routed. Uh, sometimes we get dispatched through a call and then something else, you know, pops up that we have to respond to. If that happens, uh, you know, you'll be notified, officer had been routed. It will be redirected after completion or, you know, something like that. Again, it's still in development, but it is coming and we're hoping to roll that out uh this summer. And also, uh, to follow up on that, uh, you'll be given a reference number. Um, so if there's any questions about the call, you know, the investigator's name and contact uh information. And then uh, the best part, I think at the end of that, you'll be prompted for a little survey asking what you think about the quality of the service that um you receive. I think that's good for um for us to know. Um, also, we have a new, if you haven't checked it out yet, we have a new department website. If you haven't checked it out, hawaiipolices.gov, hawaiipolices.gov. Uh, if you haven't looked at it, please take a look at it. It's full of lots of very useful information about our department. We have media releases, our archive, um, media releases, employment opportunities. There's an overview of all of our cold homicide uh cases. There's crime prevention tips from our agricultural theft, the fentanyl safety, the scam safety tips. Online booking law, this is fairly known to me, but the online booking law, law, this is uh for people who want to know somebody's been arrested. Um, but arrested and charged only people, and it's only on there for seven days because it takes up some memory and whatnot. So we're going to keep it out of seven days, so you can go on there and look. And then what I find most interesting uh is the crime mapping feature. So you go on the map, you click on the map, you zoom in to whatever location you want to see. And you can see all the areas where the police have been dispatched or yeah dispatched to and the type of calls that have been uh reported, you know, crimes against persons, property crimes, and, you know, medical callings and things like that. So uh, really helpful, so if you kind of know what kind of crime is happening in your, well, in the area. Well, before I conclude my portion of the presentation, on behalf of the police department and myself personally, I just want to give thanks to the Waimea Community Association um and the South Kohala Community. Um, I just really can't give enough thanks, but from the bottom of my heart, because I was very supportive of the first responders. I mean, even from today, I've got all the nice cake of Police Week. Um, it had been going wearing blue in supportive uh place, but um, you know, let's do the annual first responders on uh dinner as well. So much appreciated of all the support. If there's anything that we from the police department thing would need to assist you, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm going to stick around, um, but I don't want to take up too much time. I'll turn it over to our, our SROs.
Uh, who are our usual monthly um statistics? Unfortunately, Officer Kamanti's not here and uh he does the current report. I, I usually do a traffic report, so I'll I'll go over some of the traffic statistics for the month of April. Uh, last month, we had eleven major traffic accidents. Uh, usually includes uh significant damage to vehicle, damage to vehicle, injuries. Uh, we did have five DUIs last month, uh, which mirrored five DUIs in twenty twenty-four for the month of April. Unfortunately, we did have one fatality in District on the Waikoloa area. Uh, one statistic that I looked up kind of surprised me is um, usually our top two citations are speeding and regulatory citations. With, you know, like expired city checks, weight taxes. Um, last month, we actually gave out a hundred and ten unsafe vehicle citations, more than speeding. Uh, those are like the big, large tires, um, cars without, with broken windows. Uh, so that kind of drew my attention. Um, some community events. Um, the tent is the Cherry Lawn. I know it was, so we'll be down there to be uh special duty officers, so um, try to avoid that area. Unless you want to be part of that crazy crowd, go ahead. I wish you luck. Uh, May twenty-second is Coffee to Cop here at Burger King. Um, you can come check out myself and Officer Kamanti will be over there. Two other things I wanted to bring up, uh, being that myself and Officer Lewis back there are school resource officers. I'm a school resource officer, Waikoloa, he's uh at Waimea School. So on May sixteenth is the Waimea School Ho'olau area. So the, the traffic will probably be kind of busy around the gym area. So avoid that also, May sixteen. I hope the construction is not going on during then because it's going to be chaos. And uh, my Ho'olau at Waikoloa School is on May twenty-third. So that whole intersection, it gets pretty busy, so. Those are two important days. You might want to watch traffic along with the Cherry Lawn. And that's about it.
Officers, and again, just mahalo for all of your work and all of your service. We'll do a photo with the police officers afterwards if anyone wants to stick around for that. So up next, we have our two county council people. Um, speaking first is Councilwoman Heather Campbell, District One. And she is talking to us from Washington DC. So quick reminder, we'll take questions after um she, Congress, uh, sorry, I'm rushing in there. After Councilwoman Eustace, our house.
Hello, everyone. Uh, good morning. It, it over here in DC, it is, it is now tomorrow, so just past midnight, but wanted to make sure I connected with you folks today. Um, first of all, I just wanted to share a little bit about why I'm over here. Um, Hawaii was chosen as one of ten states to participate in an opioid settlement ambassador group. It's a, a nationwide program looking at how the opioid settlement funds are being spent in the counties across the nation. So if you're not familiar, um, the opioid settlement is um pharmaceutical companies and distributors like Walmart, Walgreens um are paying into a fund that is being distributed to the states and counties to help address fentanyl uh issues in, in our communities. Um, in our state, most of that funding is going directly to the state, eighty-five percent. But fifteen percent of that is going to the counties directly. And so what we're doing over here is um sharing best practices between counties about how we distribute those funds. Um, in particular, we're looking at diversion programs that, you know, folks that, that um get caught with, with fentanyl um don't end up incarcerated, but maybe end up in those types of um substance abuse service programs that they might need. Um, we're looking at response teams that can embed themselves either with the police force or the EMS or the fire department that include substance abuse specialists and mental health professionals. Um, and of course, we're using, looking at youth diversion programs, so definitely want to talk to you, Captain Valera, about some of the things that I learned over here with respect to um that. We're also looking at some of the um new drugs that are being trafficked that are, are opioid adjacent. Um, one of them is fentanyl uh laced with something called Xylazine, which is a horse tranquilizer. Um, this is, is starting to grow in prevalence across the country. And one of the really frightening things about this is it doesn't respond. Uh, when people overdose on, on this combination, uh, it doesn't respond to Narcan, which has been very, very successful in the reduction of fentanyl deaths. Um, in the last couple of years, we've seen a, a national reduction in, in fentanyl deaths by about thirty percent because of the Narcan distribution. And I know you folks up there in Waimea have been very active in making sure that the community has ac, uh, access to, to Narcan. Um, in addition to that, we've, we spent the, some time today lobbying on Capitol Hill um with respect to other funding programs related to mental health, health um substance abuse. And of course, in particular, protection of Medicaid and Medicare at the federal level. So um, it was a busy day tomorrow. I am meeting with Senator Schatz to specifically talk about wastewater concerns and funding for our, our county. Um, and so I'm looking forward to, to having a successful conversation with him. Um, I did want to use a little bit of my time today to talk about Bill forty-seven. This is the new uh transient vacation rental bill that the council will be working on starting next week. It'll be heard in committee on Tuesday, uh, May sixth. And Bill forty-seven is a departure, I know I spoke to you guys about uh Bill one twenty-one, which was the um the bill that we had introduced early two thousand twenty-four. Um, spent a lot of time last year deliberating about it and then eventually uh decided to postpone it to the call of the chair, which basically means it's dead until, till further notice. What we decided, um, Councilmember Kirkwitz and I, who had been partnering on this bill together, was that Bill one twenty-one was just trying to do too much um in one bill. And so um, we, we've broken it apart and um are, are just going to start with the registration piece um with respect to vacation rentals. And there's no other components to it, so we took out any changes to the land use code. We took out um any changes with respect to um, uh, there's, there's, there's wording in there about real property. Uh, there's, there's, there's wording in there about real property tax code. It is just a straight up, simple registration process. Um, it will be the first step that we use primarily for data collection. Um, one of the things that we've been working on is a economic impact study with respect to vacation rentals on our island. We do know that they play an important part in our economy. Um, so we want to be very sensitive about how we make decisions around transient vacation rentals. So that's um Vacation Rental Survey has been ongoing, and so partnering that data with the data that we get from this registration process. Will hopefully help us make better decisions, more informed decisions about the land use piece and other aspects of Bill one twenty-one that we've put on hold until we have this additional information. Um, we are also partnering with uh some different vendors. We haven't selected one yet. That will um provide us with data about what is being listed on the hosting platforms. So, um, for example, they review Airbnb, Expedia, VRBO websites. And tell us how many vacation rentals are actually being listed in our county, and then we can compare that with our registration numbers. So for example, right now, under our current transient vacation rental program, under chapter twenty-five, we have about forty-three hundred. Um, short-term vacation rentals registered. Now, those are unhosted vacation rentals at this time. Hosted vacation rentals do not need to register. Um, what these, these uh companies are telling us that provide this service is that we have anywhere from nine thousand to eleven thousand vacation rentals currently operating on this island. Um, and so we, we need to get a real handle on on who's doing what, where, and then we can look at some of the other aspects of the, the bill. Uh, including incorporating um vacation destination areas, which is the concept that in areas where we already have a lot of transient vacation rentals, we might. Create these nodes where they're um, they're permitted, um areas like Beach Road in Puna or by volcano, things like that. So again, um, the first hearing of that bill will be on May sixth, this Tuesday. It's Bill forty-seven. If you have more questions about the bill and would like to see the text of the bill, I encourage you to go to HawaiiCountyTar.com. That is Hawaii County, a one word, Tar.com, and you'll see there a copy of the bill. You'll see a webinar that Councilmember Kirkwitz and I did um last month. And then you'll also see a new tool. We um, we know people learn things in different ways. So um I utilized an AI tool called Notebook LM to create a podcast based on the bill, and so you can listen to that podcast there. It's another way of just. Digesting and hearing um the information. So happy to answer any questions after you've heard from Councilmember Eustace and um. Look forward to uh seeing what Lisa has to say, who is one of my favorite people in the county, and I'm sure she's got some great information for you tonight. Thank you.
Well, hello, Councilwoman. Um, and so up next is Councilman Eustace for District Nine, and um.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for taking the time. I'm gonna be diving into the county budget a little bit. You know, amidst, you know, the legislation that we're working on, Councilmember Kimball has mentioned some. And reviewing grant applications, we've all reviewed probably over a hundred grant applications, the buy-by-grant. We're in budget season as well, so uh really diving in, I want to dive into the numbers here a little bit with you. Uh, just a quick overview. And a timeline, looking at a little bit of the operating budget, as well as a capital budget and capital improvements, and some other things there. So. First up, the county budget has two pieces. The first is the operating budget. And if you're tracking this at all, and I'm, I'm sure all of you have taken the time to read these lengthy documents, but the operating budget is Bill thirty-one. And it's a balanced budget, right? So it's balanced of our revenues, our appropriations, all of our expenditures. Legally, we have to have a balanced budget. And our budget and operating side is nine hundred thirty-seven million dollars. And this is a sixteen million dollar or one point eight percent increase as compared to the current for this past fiscal year, right? And then the second piece of that is our capital budget, or Bill thirty-two, so kind of that companion piece. And this is, the capital budget itself is really the first year of the capital improvement program, which is a six-year kind of process. So the capital budget is really just that first year, this, this next fiscal year, and this is really those major non-recurring expenditures that we fund and 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 expend dollars for. And this capital budget for this upcoming fiscal year is five hundred fifty-five million dollars of projects, of expenditures and so forth. So I just wanted to touch on the timeline here, because you're, we're kind of catching us at an interesting time here where we haven't seen, you know, any changes from the departments. Any of those supplementals and changes that are requested in the mayor's, the mayor's budget. So we're looking forward to May fifth, Monday. The mayor will submit his, his second draft of the budget. So the first draft of the budget came in end of February. And as council, we sat down in the month of April, and we had four days of departmental hearings and budget review. We heard from over twenty-plus different departments across the county, uh their requests, program review, things that they're doing within the departments. On May twentieth is an opportunity for the public, you know, to get involved, to listen, and the, the council will be having some public hearings in the evening hours. And one of those meetings will be specific to real property tax, if there are rate changes proposed by the mayor. So that will be on the evening of May twentieth, and then you can kind of see the time flow of that as well. May twenty-second is really when the, the council will be having about the first hearing of the budget. And up until that point, councilmembers will be proposing amendments and other sort of changes, both to the operating and the capital. So we'll kind of see that progress and be put on the agenda for that date. And then there's a second reading, and you can kind of see that down the road. Um, and there's a review process during that time. The mayor can also veto it at the end of this, at the end of the line here as well, and then there's kind of other procedures for that. So looking at kind of our revenue stream a little bit, most of our revenues come from our taxes, our real property taxes. And I made sure to mirror, we'll kind of speak to that, to that side of it a bit more, but you can kind of see, I won't go through all the numbers here. But these are really all of our different revenue streams here for the county that pay for the expenses of all of our public facilities and safety facilities and all sorts. And this is where we're kind of expanding. This is kind of the breakdown of our expenditures across the county. Public safety, general government, our roads, our highway streets, our debt service. So these are like our obligations that we have to bonds. Uh, the loans that we really owe uh back for large project, for sure, projects that we've been working on and were beholden to. Health benefits, of course, for our workers, um, and a lot of miscellaneous stuff there as well. It's kind of like a department of a lot of things. Some quick highlights in this year's upcoming budget. Big expenditure for our new brand management software and staffing along with that, as well as uh ADA evaluation of our facilities. More public safety positions, and this is, mind you, Chief Bird spoke about requests and new things kind of coming forward. This is based off of what we as a council and you as a public is seeing as, as kind of moving forward from the mayor's first draft. But we've also seen an increase in contractual services and road maintenance. Uh, there's also been a request for more repair and maintenance for our parks and recreation facilities. Also an increase to our debt service, really paid for the obligations that we have. Uh, and then of course, a large transfer to our capital project fund, really to speak to our wastewater treatment facilities. Uh, approximately twenty million dollars we've allocated directly to go towards our capital improvement projects. I just want to spend a moment on this one because it, it's, it's a bit shocking. You know, the, the yellow line is about fifty million dollars, and this is what we typically spend, or we allocate on an annual basis towards our capital projects. But we do have some major obligations when it comes to wastewater in the years ahead. And you can kind of see that drastic jump in allocation and funding we need to appropriate for the improvements of our infrastructure. For Gila wastewater, as well as our KALK and other wastewater facilities across the island. So. A big commitment we have to make, coming down from the federal side, of course, that we have to move forward on improving our wastewater treatment facilities across that area. And this definitely will have an impact on how we, how we dress all of our capital improvement projects. But we also have some other things we need to consider. You know, these are a little bit dated, but we have some challenges that are coming down from the federal side as well. How funding may be changed for us. And from our past numbers, you know, this is gonna be changing those federal grants for a lot of our different departments. Big impact on our housing and options there, as well as any of our federal funded positions. So some changes there, potential changes there, and more to come, I would, I would imagine as well. Shifting over a little bit to our, the capital improvement side, the capital budget. Now, these are kind of a, all the different things that you would see in our capital improvement list, in these projects that are requested by the department, by the mayor, and the council will move forward and kind of approve it. So a land acquisition, large-scale infrastructure projects, our roads, or new buildings, structures, additions to existing buildings. Or any sort of planning feasibility and engineering studies. But then we also have to consider kind of the priorities. You know, these are, you know, our obligations. What the mayor sees, administration sees, what we see as community as priorities within the capital budget. So those items that are legally mandated, specifically on our wastewater, these are things that we have to move forward on. We're required to, to, to take care of those issues for the community. Uh, then it also speaks to, are these things mapped out in the general plan? And the general plan is something that, you know, really is this vision guiding document for the county. And we'll be picking it up in the summer after we kind of get to the budget phase here, but that's the goal, is to kind of pick up the general plan after the commissions have really spoken to it. The planning commissions, and really dive into the general plan as well, to really map out really how capital public, capital group projects look like going forward. And then just a, a number of different funding sources for capital projects. Most often, we look at debt, our bonds, to float, you know, a lot of these large-scale projects. Um, some of the other ones may not always be readily available. You know, you can look at the federal grants, maybe that's not, not something we can lean on. Or we can look at our revenue sources, like our fuel tax opportunities to fund some of these things, or partially fund them and find other mechanisms to fund these, some of these large projects. Other options are like our special finance districts, our community facility districts, or our fair share contributions that sometimes landowners are beholden to when they develop their properties. And then, of course, you know, this is our stages of how we, how we fund the project, the projects, from appropriation by council. To bond authorization, authorization by council as well, by specifying which projects funding can be used for. Or the allotment by which finance department releases these funds, and encumbrance by those departments. And by the mayor, via like any contractual agreements, executed contracts, and then, of course, the departments expend those dollars going forward. I'd also want to just touch us, touch on a couple of the island-wide capital improvement projects that are on the CIP list. So this kind of speaks across the whole island, from our transfer station upgrades and repairs, to bridge inspections, guard rail improvements. Uh, looking at our bus stop shelters, um signage, as well as an island-wide trail plan. So this is just kind of an overview and highlight of some of the projects out there. Most often, the projects are kind of broken down by the districts, by the council districts, but this is the kind of ones that kind of cross, across the county. And I just wanted to show you some of the ones that are very specific to District Nine that are on the mayor's uh this capital approval project list. This includes a Spencer Cloney shooting district park and that community shelter that that facility. Uh, the ask there is for fifteen million dollars in that list. We also have the Mahu Pona Beach Park and that redevelopment. Uh, so two million dollars for a planning and a study of that area. We also have the Waikolo Road and the Pana La Avera section, um, asking for eight million dollars there. And then, you know, a number of other facilities, you know, some of these are, you look at the South Poli Fire Station. That area, and we've had conversations here in the community about PSPS with one electric, so an emergency generator at that specific fire station is one of those. Needs for, you know, for service and response for that community, for that station, because they are kind of in that PSPS area. Um, yes, and then also our Ouli and Kahi, that's our affordable housing project down along Quahai Road. And need some major upgrades for their wastewater treatment and repairs and renovations in that space. So yes, you've, you've kind of caught us right in the middle of the, the budget season here, and, you know, I look forward to presenting kind of more updates and information. On the budget, to kind of go through the phases and the stages here, but I encourage you to kind of, you know, track what's going on at the council when it comes to the budget and the changes that are proposed. And then what comes on on Monday, of course, with the mayor's second draft. Uh, but we have a number of upcoming meetings. I encourage you to get involved in those and attend them, uh to see what's being proposed to the capital budgets, as well as that whole process there. And then, you know, with that, I just wanted to touch on, you know, this is kind of my call to action to, to get involved in the community, to kind of step forward and get engaged. And as we shared earlier, we held a number of community meetings uh across the district here with our state legislators from Northway, as well as Councilmember Kimball. Uh, so good opportunity to learn about what they're doing, what they've done at the state in their state legislative session. The state legislation, legislature is adjourning on Friday, so they're kind of at the tail end of their spring session. Before they go into summer, and they've, they've got more work to do, of course, but a good, good opportunity to ask them and learn about the work they've done in this past spring. When it comes to all the projects and bringing stuff here to Northway. So I encourage you to join us. Uh, we'll be at Parker School for our YMA crowd on Wednesday, so grateful to Parker School for hosting us that evening, so please join us. And I will leave it at that for now, but you're also welcome to stop by our YMA office. We're at the Parker Square Center. And I have more information, if you're interested in testifying or learning about, you know, bills and agendas. You can, the tree coat will kind of take us there and show you how to testify. So I'll leave it at that for now, and then we'll open up for questions.
Yeah, so just as a quick reminder, we do have one more speaker who's been very patiently waiting, but out of, you know, out of respect for uh Councilwoman Kimball. Does anyone have a, a question or two that they would like to ask now? There will be time for questions at the end. Specifically, I would say if they're related to anything that, that uh Councilwoman Kimball talked about. Any questions? All right, let me bring the mic back to you.
Okay. Well, I'm Joshua Montgomery. I'm a, I'm a founder here in the Big Island. Uh, this question's for Councilwoman uh Kimball. Uh, according to your numbers, uh, there's nine thousand, eleven thousand vacation rentals. And the mayor's working group on unpermitted improvements has put the number of unpermitted improvements on the island at four in ten. So four in ten properties on the island of Hawaii have significant unpermitted improvements on them due to historic issues with, with planning and permitting. That means that there are three thousand six hundred to four thousand four hundred vacation rentals on this island that have significant unpermitted improvements. And as part of your registration process, uh those folks um would lose their registration. Um, and so. You know, vacation rentals represent about ten percent of the budget of the island of Hawaii, and pay about ninety million dollars a year in taxes from between us and our visitors. So my question to you, Councilwoman Kimball, is how are you gonna handle the unpermitted improvements that many of these vacation rental operators have in terms of keeping them legal and keeping our economy living? Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, first of all, I want to make sure that it's clear to, to both you and the audience that the numbers that I quoted. Um, are estimates coming from um a couple of different vendors, Granicus being one. Um, and Hosting Compliance uh as another, that offer uh services that scrub, like I said, VRBO, Airbnb, Expedia, all of that. Um, to tell us approximately how many are listed. So we don't know for certain what that number is. And, and I, that's why I say our, our, we have worth forty-three hundred registered. Some of them are telling us we've got about nine thousand. The highest number we got was eleven thousand. What that number really is at the end of the day, we'll only know until we actually have a registration process. Um, I do want to make clear that chapter twenty-five still is the regulatory component with respect to short-term vacation rentals that are um unhosted. And so that language already adopted and already law in chapter twenty-five actually requires that short-term vacation rentals that are unhosted have a valid final permit. So through that program that currently exists, you do have to provide your permit information when you apply for those unhosted permits. The difference here is the registration process, um, which will also include bed and breakfasts, which. Um, in agricultural and residential areas do have to get a use or a special use permit, which would also require that they have their final building permits. Um, the only exception is hosted rentals that are in permitted zones. Um, we are asking that they have a sign and affidavit that they meet health and safety requirements, um, but there is no requirement of final permit. So there's a lot of different pieces of this that are working and woven together. Um, but that, that is my best answer to your question is that through the bed and breakfast permit, which was also covered under this. And the, the current STVR law, a finalized permit is already required.
All right, um, do we have another question? All right, um, do we have another question? Oh, okay. We will take other questions at the end. Hands did not come up fast enough. Um, so.
I did them in with the numbers, sorry. I did them in with all the numbers, sorry.
You did it within all of the numbers. All right, so up next, we are going to, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, our final speaker tonight is, um, Hawaii County Real Property Tax Administrator Lisa Mora. We had several questions in previous meetings this year regarding property taxes. So we are incredibly grateful that Lisa can join us this evening to provide an overview. Of the county's real property tax policies and processes. We will take more questions at the end. I do want to give a reminder. She will not be able to answer questions that are specific to your personal property tax situation. There are one hundred and forty thousand, you said, different units in the state on, on island. She doesn't know them all off the top of her head. Rather, we appreciate if questions are more general. If you have specific questions, you'll need to call the real property tax office. Where they have information to those county records for individual properties and can bribe you with that information then. Okay, so mahalo with that. Uh, Lisa, let's take over.
Thank you very much. It's always hard to follow police and fire when I'm in the same room with them. Um, especially hard to follow council members. And I'd just like to share that. People dream of being police and firemen. They want to be a mayor. They want to be council. Nobody dreams of being a real property tax collector. My husband isn't enjoying being married to a real property tax collector. But here I am. It's a, it's a horrible job. Somebody has to do it. I live in the Waimea community. Um, I've been here for about sixteen years now. My husband's here this evening. He wishes I used my maiden name. I wasn't in this position when we first got together, so he's a little bit stuck with me. Are you gonna hit the slides for me or do you want me to? Okay, I'll just go next one. I'm gonna try and go fast so that we can get you guys out of here on time. I know everybody has to drive home after this. Um, the next slide is going to be on a little bit about. How government is set up. I worked for the county for about seven years and did not fully understand this. I thought we're all county, we work together and everything's great. And I got in and I realized, well, that's not really how it works. And so Nancy Parstman had actually asked me to cover this a little bit since the legislative side, county council members spoke. I actually come under the mayor's side of the administration. I mean, I'm down, down somewhere far. So I'm not, um, quite up there, but I'd like to share a little bit. So this is your Hawaii county government. There's the county charter, which voters, every time we go through the election, there's a whole bunch of ballots that we can vote on. Most times you need to go read somewhere what they're about and try and decipher what. Some of the attorneys have kind of confused into it. I always like to say they legalize it. And I don't know if I'm supposed to vote yes or no, because it gets confusing. Always good to read up about it. I call it like our local constitution. I know that's not the right terminology, but that's what I need to use in my brain. And that's from the voters. Also in life is what the voters elected. They vote in our county council members. We have nine on this island. That's the legislative side. And on the mayor's side, you also elect him in. So the mayor's elected in and then when it comes to his division heads and department heads, he appoints them. But the council has to confirm them. So there's a check and balances in place. I know for some people, they don't think it's always there. But there is some of it. When it comes to the county code, this is the law that I have to follow. Do I agree with everything in there? No. Um, but it's my job to uphold the county code. And so any change made to the county code needs to go through a council member to be introduced. And then it needs to be supported and passed by majority of the council. And it doesn't just go through one hearing or two hearings. They have a committee hearing. And depending how it goes there, it can advance to the county council meeting and then they have two hearings there. So we spend a lot of time with county council members when bills are being passed. Because I'm in the real property tax office, um, I spend a lot of time with them in different meetings. Lots of ideas come up. There's a lot of. Individuals that move over. They have kids somewhere else in another country, another state. And taxes are always better there. And so they want it to be like somewhere else. So let's throw it out and try it. And some things work and it's Hawaii, some things don't, right? We are set up very differently. So once it finally actually passes here, and not everything passes, if you've ever watched Council. And I, I don't watch everything. If I'm not part of it, I. I watch it. If I accidentally fall on that channel, I'll admit. But if it passes, it can go to the mayor. Uh, it doesn't, it can go, it has to go to the mayor. He either can sign it in, he can veto it. Or he can let it go through, um, without his signature. And I believe it's a ten day hold at the mayor's. And we can go to the next slide. On the bottom, I have that little comment, working together for our community. I like to say ninety-five percent of the time that, that works. You know, we're working together, we're moving forward. There's always going to be disagreements. They're passionate about something. Their constituents, that's who they're representing, is all of you are passionate. My staff get passionate, the mayor's side gets passionate. It doesn't always go seamlessly, but at the end of the day, we need to have respect for each other and for the process that we have in government. So on the mayor's side, which is the administration, there's the finance director, my boss. She is appointed by the mayor, confirmed by county council. And she covers eight divisions. And one of the divisions includes budget, which. Um, Councilmember Houston and Councilmember Kimball talked about today. And under there, there's administrative rules, which is just more rules for us to follow that are. Great attorneys that the county help create so that we're not breaking any laws. And then I'm way down here, so you see how low on that pole I am. And my job in our office is we value the properties to market value every January first. And so a lot of people get upset because if they came from California, you've got Prop thirteen, you don't, you don't have to do it every year. It's, um, it's in our code that we go to market value what you can sell your property for. But then from there you can lower it because you can have exemptions. And programs which will lower your taxable value. That's also the work we do in our office at real property tax. I have a lot of handouts after. I'm so sorry I keep touching that. I'm gonna stop now. But it's a lot of programs and exemptions to help lower the taxes. And this is where some of the battle comes in when it goes to council, which program should be passed? Because every time we lower one area, you gotta raise tax somewhere else. So it's not like we can say everybody gets a break. Somewhere it's gonna be made up. I don't make that decision, but I will admit I get yelled at on the weekly for those decisions. And, and that's because I'm there and in the office, you come in seven forty-five to four thirty. Or six thirty to six thirty, and I'm there working. And then at the end, we collect the taxes. And so we're gonna get back into that in the next slide. But what, um, Councilmember Houston said is right, majority of local revenue comes from property taxes. But I'm not the only taxes. There are also transit accommodation tax. We get a little bit of T E tax, which might go away in a couple of years because that's controlled by the state legislature. Talk to your. Your state representatives about that. There's fuel tax that goes on highways, and then we get grants from other sources. But majority of the funding for the county of Hawaii is from real property tax and it stays on this island. It doesn't go anywhere else. So how taxes are calculated, all of you should have gotten your assessment notice recently. And it'll have on there your assessed value. And if you've got any exemptions, if you're all homeowners, you should have a homeowner exemption. That is your biggest tax break next to agricultural that you can receive that county council has passed. So be sure it's on there. If not, I have cards there to my direct line call me. We need to make sure you get on that. And then you reduce that to a taxable value. So that will top line, that's our office. But the programs and exemptions, again, county council has to pass that. The taxable value then is multiplied by the tax rate. That is something county council does. People get very confused. They're like, Lisa, you guys raised the value so hard. Hi, the market went up. Our taxes are going up. Doesn't always have to. Tax rates do change. They can change. They could go down. Historically, they usually stay relatively the same because inflation catches up and then council's stuck with some pretty hard decisions. I like to think it's gonna go down, and it did go down a couple of years ago, only for homeowners and the affordable rental class. And then that's how your taxes are calculated. You take the taxable value, times the tax rate, divided by a thousand dollars in value, there's your taxes. We collect them every year. It's, I, I never knew this before I worked for property tax. Every year on August twenty and February twenty, if you don't have a mortgage, you'll get a bill. For taxes. Next slide. Okay, so the biggest two programs that we have are homeowner and the agricultural programs, but here's a lot of other exemptions that we do have. If you know of anybody who is a disabled veteran, right now it does need to be a hundred percent. But maybe if we talk to our council members enough, they'll lower that one day. But I'm just bringing that out there for future reference. Um, their tax bill would be one half of men taxed, so it's a hundred dollars. It doesn't matter what size it is. And the reasoning for that, and it's done in a lot of states throughout the country, is because. They're disabled due to service related injury they did for us. And so they can get this discount, but a lot of them aren't aware of that. Or they don't want to read the insert I sent out because there's so much information. We're government. We. We, we need to get better at putting something better out. But we're gonna only cover these two programs tonight because I'm in a pretty limited timeframe, so I'm gonna get right through them. Next slide. These are the current tax rates. And as you'll see on top, that goes from July first of last year, June thirtieth of this year. Heaven forbid, we should be on a calendar year cycle. We are on a fiscal cycle. We start July first and June thirtieth. And so the tax rates you see here will end on June thirtieth unless county council changes them. Councilmember Houston mentioned that they're gonna have a hearing in May. I believe he said a date in May, um, where they're gonna possibly propose new tax rates. And every year, just so you know, people are proposing new tax rates, go up here, come down here. Sometimes they don't agree on anything and they have five proposals and they go back to the old numbers. Sometimes something comes down. It's always fun. It's, it's like rolling the dice for our office. We just sit there, listen and figure out which group's gonna be mad at us this year. So we will know and they have until June twenty to figure it out and to make their final decision. I feel like that's really late, but that's, again, that's in the code. That's not these rules. Um, next screen. Okay, homeowners, this is the big one. When people talk about the age exemption, the age exemption applies to the homeowner program. So if you're not a homeowner, we'll get calls and say, oh, I have vacant land. I'm living in Las Vegas. Can I get the age exemption? No, you have to be living here, residing here on your property to get it. It's automatic when you fill out your paperwork, we put in your birth date, it's hidden from even most of our staff. And it calculates and it has to be the date of birth on January first. All right, next slide. And real quick, the agricultural use summary of, um, changes. We went from two programs to three programs. I know I've done a couple of presentations. Between Pohala here and Waikoloa on this, as well as other parts of the island. It can come up to about thirty presentations. But we are always happy to meet with anybody at any time because tax programs are confusing. I don't know of any tax policy that isn't. And I don't know a way to make it simpler other than meeting with individuals personally. So we can talk about your property, what you want to do with it, if you want to leave it to your children, how can they not get taxed out of it? But sometimes we start talking about personal things, so it's always easier to do it one on one. And in group settings, there's a lot of statements that come out about, you know, what they don't like about taxes. Like, I get it, but I want to help you. With whatever your concern is for your personal property. There's now three different programs. You can learn more about them online at our website. Not everybody likes to use the web. I, I'm. Kind of born in the half generation of, I like technology and I hate technology. But I always tell people, you don't have to go to it. I have forms printed. I'll come to you. I'll meet you anywhere. I will meet people in the hospital if they're in there trying to do stuff with their kids. It doesn't matter. I'll bring forms to you to make sure you have it done. Um, but if you go to our website, there's a whole bunch of data, but if you click on forms. And go to the next slide, there's gonna be a dropdown menu for a lot of options. We are trying to redo it because it's an archaic website. But there's a whole bunch that apply just to the agricultural program. If you're here tonight and you're only interested in agricultural, I have handouts there and I can talk to you about it after. Last change I think is coming up. And this is my direct line at the county. It's not to our phone number where you're gonna guess. And someone answers our phone. If we have staff in the office, they answer. You're not gonna have to push a button to go and ask, look for someone's last name. I hate those services. I think. At the government, somebody should pick up your phone. That's a personal opinion. Um, that's not shared by many, but I hate using those. I don't know last names of anyone. I don't know what department or division I need to call. I want somebody to pick it up and transfer that call to someone who knows the answer. But we're not always there or we're getting flooded with calls and you might get a machine that says, call us back later because. We have call out of country. Everybody has numbers somewhere. We don't know if we're calling you in Las Vegas, DC or Pona. So unfortunately, it's not something they can call back at. That saves county taxpayer dollars a little bit too. Um, and that's my direct email to the county government, um, and to my office. So please feel free to contact me directly. More than happy to help and I got us done at about the right time if there's any questions. And she's right, I wish I could. My memory's horrible. I can't remember all hundred forty-one thousand parcels. But I'm always happy to look into it and I will get back to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. I don't go anywhere yet. I'll have you and. Councilman Houston come back up and then if there's any other questions I do have, thank you. For that presentation. That's far and away the most I've ever understood real property tax and I'm married to it already, so good to see you. Um, I do have one question that I'm gonna ask from online that you can take a pause, Lisa, because it is not for you. This is from Alana Adams. The level of herbicide spraying in Waimea slash South Cohala is extremely concerning. Can you provide some clarification on what chemicals are being sprayed on the county roads and state highways? And if you can't tonight, James, is there somewhere that Alana could reach out and get that information?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question, Mary Beth. Um, I don't have all the details on that and it is complicated on what is a state highway, what's a county, county road. And there were some change, there were changes made here at the county side. Um, for example, the road here through Waimea was a county road. And we council previously passed, uh, regulation on what can be sprayed on those areas, but then the roads switched and it's a state highway. So the state had their own, you know, their own avenue of what they could use and everything. Um, but we still have those restrictions at our county park facilities. So that's, that's a plus there. Uh, but I don't have those resources, the, the specifics on the, the, um, the herbicides being sprayed. They tend to change the name sometimes of the herbicide. So if we. Uh, prohibit one, sometimes they'll use a different one that's kind of a similar chemical compound makeup, um, that they'll kind of use. There, there's also, there, there's a trade off though, to be understood. Sometimes when. When we can't, there are areas where we cannot, you know, technically or have manpower out there weed whacking and cutting all the time. So sometimes we have to use some sort of spray and that's the conversation I think we have to keep having about what is. Promissible in certain areas around communities. So have to have those conversations. Uh, but some of those conversations about what is being sprayed, still needs to be talked about with our Department of Works. As well as state highways, Department of Transportation, and I can definitely connect with that individual to give those resources there. Thank you.
Mahalo, uh, other questions? Okay, I will come over there with my mic. All right, I'm gonna hold on to the mic.
I started to touch on a direct correlation. With, uh, vacation rentals and property taxes. And the direct correlation is that. When interest rates were very low, you know, the economy system, you had this, that, 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 yeah. A lot of second home buyers, third home buyers, fourth home buyers, buying these properties, starting to make the vacation rentals. Eliminate the opportunity for long-term money. But you get a lot more revenue on the property tax side. So we're putting our people out on the streets. I've been here my whole life. And I'm telling you now, nothing what we're doing is sustainable. Agriculture should be totally exempt. From property tax. It's near in the bona fide production area. But I think we need to really understand what vacation rentals has done to the state of Hawaii and to society. It is not a positive thing. It should have stayed all down through the reserves, should have never went to places that lay land. Or, you know, downtown Hilo and, uh, the host blocks area and stuff like that. This setting is a, is a, is a, is a great misconception. In that when mayors say, well, we're not gonna raise taxes. You don't have to raise their taxes. You're raising yourself. Because the equity of properties has gone up so high. If you took away in entirety. The vacation rental opportunity or business in entirety, property values, funding. property values would plummet, property taxes would plummet. So what we're doing is we're increasing our current capacity of human beings on the run. Visitors, let's say we get ten, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand a day. Plus our grand population that we already have. You just can't continue this. There's no, there's no balance. So the property tax offices, you know, with seventy percent of everything this county does, most all counties, is property tax revenue. So it's kind of feeding the fire. Burning gas on a fire. The property tax revenue that you're getting from higher property values that are driven by vacation rentals. If you eliminated the vacation rental, your property values would not actually appreciate that drastically. I mean, I've got family members that have property tax burden of forty-five hundred a year. And they're like sixty-seven years old and they're still working. So when you retire and stuff, and property values continue to rise, how do you, how do you balance that out?
Thank you for that. And I'll also say, my question, can you remind us of when that hearing is for the bill that Councilwoman Kim will mention, and I'll let you respond to that as well? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So Councilwoman Kim will's bill, along with Councilwoman Kerko Witz that they're introducing, will be heard next Tuesday in front of the committee, the finance committee that day. But, and as you mentioned, there's the finance committee.
I think it's the government.
It's in the government committee dinner. That's right. So it'll be next Tuesday, sorry. And the council had taken up a large kind of omnibus bill before to tackle all the different issues about short-term vacation rentals. But there really wasn't a consensus with the previous council on trying to find a path forward. There was testimony that swung it this way or that way and trying to find a solution. So they're trying to tackle it, you know, step by step. So I, I do encourage you to kind of get involved in the conversation. They're starting with the registration of these businesses to kind of really understand our total numbers that we have on island, because that's an unknown for sure. We have all these different estimates. We really need to understand those impacts and what, what that is doing to the economy for sure. And then the future bills, as we kind of saw with Bill one twenty-one previously, they were trying to address different communities about where this is more allowable. They're trying to identify, in essence, a conversation will probably come up about, you know, is, is resort notes and those sort of words allowable? That, that might come up again in the conversation. But I want Administrator Mira to kind of speak to some other mechanisms that we have in real property tax that that are there for homeowners and property owners that they could use instead of going to necessarily write to short-term vacationals or from a bank account. But there are mechanisms that, that could lend maybe a compliment to that, if you want to speak to that.
So you're right, because the short-term vacation rentals, even if you're a homeowner and you're doing a short-term vacation rental, and I think the individual that was here a year left, unfortunately, but you don't get the lowest tax rate. You pay the highest, one of the higher tax rates because you're doing short-term rental. And part of that was more to discourage short-term rentals to go to long-term. And I have gotten yelled at many a times by individuals who feel like it's their property. They should be able to do whatever they want. They don't feel like it's affecting the community. And then others on the other side feeling like they need the income from the short-term rental to cover it. However, we are definitely lacking in long-term housing. And there's not a lot of, I, I don't think there's one solution coming from someone who grew up in state housing when it was actually a thing where we could afford to buy affordable housing. It was really affordable. We have one working parent and a single parent doing that. And I speak from experience when I can say there's no way my husband and I could afford a house by ourselves. Like, there's, we have to go together, team up, get my parents or his parents. You know, it was, it's not affordable today. Even if you have decent jobs. And that is a problem and it's scary. There is a bill coming, it's a bill that's passed, so there's a long-term rental housing tax class that's gonna start next year. And that is hopefully to encourage owners to do long-term housing so you're not at the highest tax class. Because what we're getting pulled a lot by the community, and I can see it in the Affordable Rental Program. The Affordable Rental Program is the same tax rate as the homeowners. So it will keep it down. It has a three percent cap. But the max amount you can rent the property for on the west side is so low that people on the west side don't go into it. So we have over two thousand properties in this program and maybe only about ten percent on the west side. A lot of our jobs are on the west side, hotel construction, so they're driving over from the east side, adding to the gas, their gas mileage, they're paying taxes on that. And it's not, it's not balancing out. So council passed a bill to do a long-term rental class. And those applications start in July. I've heard from property owners that said, I don't care how much of a discount you give me on my taxes. I'm still gonna do short-term because it's better money. And I don't like all the squatter rights or the tenant rights because tenants have a lot of rights in Hawaii. And I think that's gonna be a debate for council. I'm not the best at all the policymaking, but something does need to give because affordable housing is hard. Our kids are graduating college. They're gonna have no jobs and not be able to come home. They, they're gonna live with us forever. God help me. I love my kids. I'm on a downside, so they, they don't have to book. We, we're gonna have to allow it because they can't afford to go anywhere else. And I know it's a problem for a lot of people, so I hear you. And I know a lot of the members on council, if not all nine of them, have heard it too. And so I think the balance is figuring out what's gonna work. And it seems like they're all throwing stuff at it and praying something comes through. And then we're panicking, seeing that the feds might take away a lot of any of our housing program. So I, I wish I could tell you I had the answer, but you're trying on the property tax side to support the long-term housing as much as possible. Another thing council passed is if you're a homeowner, you can do long-term housing in your property, the dwelling you're living in, and getting that lower tax rate, and you won't lose it. In the past, you couldn't, right? You had to do only affordable rental, or here comes the horrible tax office jacking up that rate. But now they passed it so an owner can do all the long-term rental housing they want. I should say with maybe a little less, but basically, if you're doing six-month and longer contracts, that's long-term housing, six months and longer. Anything less than six months is considered short-term for us. I know planning says thirty, thirty days, unhosted, hosted, it's all confusing. It's simple. It's the same as the state. Less than hundred eighty days or six months is short-term. Six months and longer is long-term. That will help the local community the most. Thank you so much for that.
Do you have tax break program for doing long-term rentals?
Yes.
Exciting, you know?
Absolutely, yes. So that's the long-term. There's two different ones. There's the affordable. His question was, do you get a tax break if I don't live on the property, but I'm renting my home to someone? Absolutely. So the long-term rental program that starts next year, but applications go up July first. And I can write your email or phone number and text you as soon as it's ready, would give you a break on your taxes. If you're renting it for a lower amount than what the max was, and I want to say for West Hawaii, it was for a three-bedroom, it was like twenty-four hundred. So it's pretty low from what a lot of people could get. But affordable still, right? I mean, more than the four thousand you are charging, then you actually pay the same as homeowner tax rate. That's the lowest tax rate we have. So I can meet with you because that's, I think that's huge.
All right, mahalo. We have another question back here. Come around. Don't hold the mic.
This may be a little manly, but the, there was a question kind of prompted me. James, the path along Oloa Kia for blocking and dogging used by a lot of people right now. So I'm noticing the grass really starting to grow in, in some sections towards the middle. I think just maybe a prompt for you to have some both. I don't want herbicide, that's just maybe old-fashioned spring trimming and edging the door or something.
I appreciate that. That's, and I'm just on a side note on that. I'm sure you've all seen the benches out there on Oloa Kia or enjoying those. So one of the Waimea Community Association, all the community partners that have moved forward and helped put those benches out there for the community that could blow down. But yeah, so that, that road is an interesting one because it, it's still not a county road, technically. We still police that road. And there's an agreement between Parker Ranch and the county for that space. But yes, I, I can definitely look at that and mention that.
It's not a county road?
It hasn't been, hasn't been officially transferred to the county.
Well, this road isn't.
It's Parker Ranch. It's Parker Ranch. And then for the county, we, we police that space though.
All right, thank you so much. Both Administrator Mira and, and Councilwoman Houston have given all of their contact information. It's quarter after seven, so I'm gonna wrap things up. Mahalo all of our speakers. Next month, we'll also be here at PEC, and we're gonna do a legislative wrap-up with Congressman Tarnas and Senator Richards. Please take cake, hold with you the big piece of, the big cake with the police logo on it. We are going to be sending to the police station. I got a thumbs up back there. And I'd love to do a picture if anybody's interested in joining us. Real quick upfront for a photo right here with the officers. So mahalo everybody for attending, and we will see you here June fifth, five thirty to seven P M. Mahalo. And pictures right here, please. That means all of the officers, please, up here.